What?
Who got this? Kevin Allen?
Yeah, Kevin got one.
I got one.
Nice picture, Fort Smith Cathedral. On the card. Kevin? Nice picture, Fort Smith Cathedral.
I think.
Yeah.
I can go back there almost.
Yep.
Very nice.
From the the right porch floor layer, Lady Harrison, Fort Smith.
I'll say six.
Can't wait to go back there and make a picture.
Because that's usually and orange. That's like usual stuff.
It's real. I think about six. You're about twenty feet away. So.
I'm about five or so.
What?
I'm trying to close the bar. The bar was your house.
I can't see out of my glasses. I don't. I can't. I mean, I work twelve hours.
I'm trying to hold by tomorrow.
Yeah. That's it.
I don't guess that we're.
No. Just checking. This is a repeat thing, but well, this is not a repeat thing. We're going to be so long as it's just not like just casually.
Yeah, I'm here.
All good.
We're not having a time now?
All good. All good. And it's populated too.
Somebody's got one that can read others.
And he's got a killer.
Wow, Mr. Buttermeyer, you have a fan already.
I'm getting all the scoops to do.
Yeah. Mrs. Grebe says welcome. I'll allow you to type the answer. The thank you.
I'll be going for it.
Can I just say thank you?
Paul, throw up down this help. This is great.
Thank you. Who's trying to get the handle?
Somebody say something. Keith, can you say test one, two, three?
Test one, two, three?
Right.
Test one, two, three.
One more time?
Thank you.
Test one, two, three.
There we go.
Anytime.
Everyone else is huge.
I'm not sure what kind of a test that was for you, Mark, but you passed with flying colors.
Yeah. All right.
I just got a little gold star on my report card. That's all.
I did. I don't know if they were trying to figure out whether or not we could count the three or they can hear us. I'm not sure.
How's it doing, Mr. Roberts? We good? All right. Everybody good? I'm glad I'm good. I'm good. Okay. Welcome, everyone, to our December fourteenth Town Council, Fort Smith Town Council meeting. Before we begin, we'll begin with our pledge of allegiance in a moment. Asylum for our men and observing our pride. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In whose republic we worship. Allegiance under God, individual liberty, justice for all. Thank you all. Okay. We will begin with a rule.
Ms. Abbott?
Yeah.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Yeah.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Good.
Here.
Now you failed the test.
No, I did.
Yeah.
And Mr. Iger.
Here. Thank you all. Just a couple of reminders for those of you participating from home. Dial star six would be to you can earn me at home. Star nine would indicate you have a question. If you're participating on Zoom and you raise your hand, we'll call upon you. When called upon, please state your name and address for the clerk. And we'll be off and running. Okay. President's executive summary. I do not have anything to add other than I hope everyone was able to take a swing by and see the trees up at the middle school. I heard there was a council tree that looked spectacular. Just putting in our, putting in my selfish plug there for the council. Next, we have our consent agenda.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Nation, we're sitting into the Board of License Commissions. We have daily liquor license for the preservation, Island Park Preservation Society, Twenty One Beach Street for fundraiser at the Seven O Six Park Ave on January first, 2021, from nine AM to five PM.
Move to approve Andrew Kelly.
Seconded, Mark Ryan.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have a holiday license. It's an annual new for Potega Bakoni. EVA Potega Bakoni nineteen sixty-five East Maryland.
Mark Ryan moved to approve.
Keith Hamilton, second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Move to adjourn as the Board of License Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have minutes, and they are all from executives from eight twenty-four, nine fourteen, nine twenty-one, ten thirteen, seven twenty-three.
Move to approve Andrew Kelly.
Seconded, Mark Ryan.
All those good?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next, we have tax vouchers. Tax voucher twenty twenty twelve fourteen dash oh one to twenty twenty twelve fourteen dash oh nine.
Move to approve Andrew Kelly.
Second, Keith Hamilton.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we are moving on. Next, we have our town administration's report. Mr. Ray?
Hi, Mr. President. Town Council ladies and gentlemen, with respect to the ongoing pandemic, I hope you and your family are doing well, staying safe. For Island's coronavirus pause will be extended for an additional week until December twentieth, following, followed by an ease of some of the restrictions on December twenty-first while leaving others in place as the state continues to set records for coronavirus hospitalizations. It is important for all of us to remember to limit our contacts and only gather with members of our immediate household. Reducing community spread is critical to reopening our economy. So I ask that everybody stay home as much as possible. Do not host or attend social gatherings and wear a mask. The current restrictions and those beginning on December twenty-first are listed on the town website in the COVID nineteen information page. These restrictions do present additional barriers for small businesses. And as I said in the past, please shop local this year. They really do need our support. I'm sure everyone has heard that the FDA has approved the COVID nineteen vaccine. Administration of the vaccine will be accomplished in phases in Rhode Island. Phase one will run December to February, and that will consist of immunizations to high-risk healthcare workers and people with significant comorbid conditions in older adults in congregational overcrowded settings. Phase two will run from February to April. Those inoculated will be K through twelve teachers, school staff, childcare workers, critical workers in high-risk settings, people with moderate comorbid conditions, people in homeless shelters and group homes and staff, incarcerated or detained people and staff, and all older adults. Keep in mind that the definition for older adults has not been defined yet. That will come out, I'm sure, in the coming weeks. Phase three will run April to June, and that will consist of young adults, children, and workers in critical industries. And then after June, it will be open to everybody who did not have access to a vaccine in previous phases. There's much more information available regarding COVID nineteen in the COVID nineteen section of our website, so please review it. With regard to the Recreation Department, we have been evaluating scheduling programs over the past eight months for use by the Recreation Department. The program that we will use will be, is called Rec Desk, and that program will be used to make and progress, process requests for reservations for use of all town recreation facilities. It will be an online program and will be assessed from the town website. We will start using the program in January after our Recreation Director Wendy Balk has briefed all the league managers and directors. We will concentrate first on scheduling of the seventy complex fields and then expand the use of the program for all recreation facilities throughout the late winter and early spring. There was recently a police toy drive where the police department hosted two Villa Cruiser events. They were held on the twenty-eighth of November and just recently on the twelfth at Dollar General Comedy Market. During these toy drives, generous donations were made by the public, including toys, gift cards, cash, and non-perishable goods. A total of one thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars has been collected and deposited into the Police Department Holiday Fund at Bank Newport. Gift cards to various stores, both retail and grocery, were provided to the high school guidance counselors, and toys collected will be distributed to enforcement families in need of assistance. Donated Christmas trees were also given by Coastal Financial and distributed to enforcement families in need. All the non-perishable goods were donated to enforcement churches, including St. Bart's, St. Mary's, St. Anthony's. The churches then provided the food to local families and shelters. Toys have also been given to Project Re-Give. It's a middle town nonprofit organization that collects unused holiday presents and toys and donates them to help celebrate birthdays and provide gifts to Lucy's Heart, the Women's Resource Center, and local schools and families. I wish to extend a most hearty Bravo Zulu to the officers of our police department. For those of you without a Navy background, Bravo Zulu is a signal code for well done with regard to action and performance. Moving on, some of you may recall that the town's application to the twenty twenty Southeast New England Network, SNAP, their call for participants for stormwater and watershed management assistance was approved for services last spring. The town requested assistance in developing a townwide climate resiliency planning and financial strategy. The work slated to begin next month will entail a facilitated process with town officials to thoroughly refine and prioritize highest priority capital needs, public workshops, consultant services to work with municipal staff to provide cost estimates to include in the capital improvement plan and to provide basis, a basis for financing options and leadership training at the town council to ensure your understanding and support for climate resilience, planning, and financing. With respect to the DPW collective bargaining agreement, we've concluded the negotiations with the Public Works Union, and we did originally expect to present a proposed agreement to the council tonight. However, last minute reviews and questions from the union are still being resolved. I hope to bring the agreement to the council at the first meeting in January for you review and approval. Additionally, at our last meeting, the town council set the sticker price for annual access to the Heady Street improved asylum transfer stations. Transfer station stickers will cost two hundred and eleven dollars for the first vehicle per household and ten dollars for one additional vehicle per household. At this time, town hall remains closed due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. To help keep all parties safe, the town will only accept twenty twenty-one transfer station sticker applications and all documents and payment by check or money order by mail or in the tax payment drop box, which is located just outside the south side door in the apartment lot. Because of the pandemic, this year, the town will allow sticker holders a two-month grace period to obtain a new sticker. That means last year's transfer station sticker will provide entry into the transfer station until the end of February. A three- to four-week turnaround time is expected on transfer station stickers, so please plan accordingly. Due to COVID and all that we have been working on over the last nine months, we don't have the ability to pay workers overtime to work weekends to process stickers. So again, I emphasize, please plan accordingly. Additionally, I was asked to provide two quick updates, one on the comp plan and one on a grant that we just received. With regard to the comp plan, when we last updated the town council, the Planning Department was working on a punch list of responses to comments to statewide planning. Ten of the twelve elements had something in the text that needed to be corrected or needed a bit of text to be added, nothing substantive. All but two elements have been fixed. Planning is working on one, and Weston and Sampson, our consultants, is working on the other. Seven of the twelve elements have mapping problems to correct and additional maps to be created. So three of the seven elements have been fixed. In summary, eight of the total of twelve elements, there's thirteen, but remember the thirteenth is an implementation element. And Weston and Sampson already has that. So eight of the total of twelve elements are ready to transmit to Weston and Sampson for final assembly in the one document with maps to be transmitted to statewide planning. None of the corrections or additions affect the Goals, Policies, Action, or Action section of each element. The text of those sections for each of the elements is untouched since the planning board approved them in our public hearing. Our plan is to have all the elements with maps ready to transmit to our consultant by the first of the year. And then lastly, it's with pleasure that I notified the council that last week, late last week, the town's application for a Van Buren Charitable Foundation grant to fund the development of a parks, recreation, and open space master plan had been approved. Van Buren Charitable Foundation has awarded the town fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for this project. We are now developing an RFP, which will be submitted to the Recreation Committee prior to release. A final report to the foundation on the status of our project will be due on the twenty-eighth of February, twenty twenty-two. So we have plenty of time to do this. President, please.
Thank you, Ray. Okay. We're moving on to resignations and appointments. First, we have reservations. Westside Development Advisory Committee should keep humble.
Move to accept with regret.
Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have the Renovation of Solid Waste Recycling Committee for Shell Call.
Move to accept with regret. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have appointments. First is Economic Development Committee. The appointment of Stephen Johnson.
Move to accept Mr. Johnson's application.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have the reappointment of Ms. Barbara Chase, the Clean Manor Housing Committee.
Move to approve Andrew Kelly.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have the reappointment of Robert Andrews to the Westside Development.
Move to reappoint Mr. Andrews to the Westside Development.
Second.
There?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Again, it's a reappointment for Mark Thayer to the Westside Development Committee.
Move to reappoint Mr. Thayer to the Westside Development.
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And now we're moving on to Design Review Board. It's the reappointment of Frank Monroe? Or on?
No.
No, Monroe.
Move to reappoint Mr. Monroe to the Design Review Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And we have the reappointment of Paul Kelly to the Juvenile Hearing Board.
Move to approve Andrew Kelly.
Seconded, Mark Ryan.
He's not my dad. This is different Paul Kelly. We're not related.
He's not related.
We are not related.
Dr. Smith's the second?
My dad is Paul Kelly. I don't know who the second was.
It's Dr. Ryan.
Thank you.
And who is not related to Mr. Kelly?
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. We have to get used to the dynamic of having counselors in here and, and remote. There's, there's a little bit of a delay, so things get a little awkward, but we're doing, we're doing great. I appreciate it. On to old business. First, we have the monthly, monthly financial report.
Do you copy? I will counsel attached to the budget update for October twenty twenty. The update represents thirty-three percent of the current this year. Overall revenues are currently at thirty percent, more than last year's thirty-two. Expenditures are at thirty-two percent, higher than last year's thirty-one. There are no significant wire or rates to be transferred to report.
That Mark Ryan moved to approve is presented.
Our motion to receive and place on file.
For that, too.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. On to old business, number two. It's the proposed amendment to chapter four oh five of the zoning ordinance to include a solar ordinance. Okay. As you know, at our last meeting, we closed a public hearing for our vote tonight. The council has two choices tonight. We can vote to approve the ordinance as presented, or we can vote to deny the ordinance, which would start the process over again. So we, we can have discussion prior to voting. To counselors, we could entertain a motion, but we, we only have the two choices tonight. We can either vote to approve the ordinance or we vote to deny the ordinance. So I vote we approve the ordinance as presented.
Second for discussion.
Okay. Motion in a second for discussion. Okay.
Well, I'll start, I guess. So if we send it through as is, any current planned or potentially planned would be able to go underneath this ordinance as is, without any adjustments. If the council wishes to make adjustments or if citizens wish to make adjustments, they could approach the council at a future meeting and request that we make adjustments through the planning board process, correct?
That is correct.
So I, I, I guess we can request, but they don't have to. I would ask that if anybody were planning on making any major developments, I would ask that they hold off for any potential changes. I don't see any, in my mind, major changes to it. It already has a special use process in there, and any major developments by anybody's property, they would be notified of it coming along. I, I found some of the testimony to be less than credible last week, specifically with the relationship to property values going down. I didn't think that was very credible. But I do hear the concerns of butters. You know, we've gone through similar things in the past with skate parks and other facilities near residential property. And obviously, the major development going along West Main Road scares a lot of people that that's coming to their backyard, so. I would be in favor of approving it, but we need to seriously look at making a couple of more tweaks to it to make it more palatable for everybody who's involved with it.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Dr. Ryan?
Yeah, to Mr. Hamilton's point, I completely agree. I think that we may want to make some adjustments, particularly as pertains to the size and scope of solar projects in residential neighborhoods, which are not clearly spelled out in the ordinance as is. I would be more in favor, I think, of voting the ordinance down until those tweaks are made so that there isn't a flurry of, well, I don't know how many people are waiting to credit to sort of apply for solar farms, but it would be easier if we made the adjustments that I think many of us are considering and certainly a lot of the folks who testified last time like before the ordinance is actually in place and allowing development to go forward. That's just my thought.
Okay. Mr. President?
Ms. Hamilton? I mean, Mr. Buttermeyer, I'm looking at Mr. Hamilton.
With his fancy background.
Yes. Fancy background.
And I wanted to bring it up for discussion only because, obviously, me being the new guy on, on council now, I read through the ordinance. I attended the meeting on the twenty-third. I went back and read the minutes from the previous meeting. To me, it seems like a solid ordinance that has all the protections put in place for the neighbors and butters. It seems to have all the mechanisms in place to protect those that would have an issue. I, I guess my only question is, and I think this was answered, Keith may have actually asked this, but once, if we pass this, we have another opportunity if there's tweaks that we discovered that need made, we're able to come back and revisit it or planning board revisits. I just, I want to be clear on that one.
Yes, I, I believe if an ordinance is, is approved any ordinance, amendments can be made to the ordinance. They generally would get referred to the planning board, so there would be a public hearing on them, and then and then recommendation from the planning board back to the council, at which time we would then vote on any proposed amendment changes. I believe that's the process. And Mr. Gavin, could you just, or Mr. Andrew?
Yeah, you would go through the same process you just went through. I mean, essentially, what you just voted on was an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So if you wanted to amend this, or if any party wanted to amend this, they would bring it to the council. You would vote on whether you would accept, you would go through the process or not. And it sounds like you would be able to go into a certain process. You would have the end of the grid, not whatever changes you wanted to have been. They would be submitted to the board advisory, and then so you'd come back to you, and then you would vote another hearing. At, at this time, and then you'd be right back to where you are, back to where we are today.
Okay. I don't know, did everybody hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
And that applies to any contest?
Yes. Is any ordinance? Yes. That was, any ordinance, that, that would be the process. My screen's only limited to a few councillors. I, do any other councillors want to speak? I, I have a couple of comments, I just want to.
I would like to.
Okay.
If I may. Yeah, I mean, I reviewed the ordinance again. I read the, the input and recommendations we got from Grow Smart, who helped develop the model ordinance for the state. And I honestly, I do believe our ordinance could benefit from a few tweaks and adjustments. It sounds like most of us agree that there should be some modifications. So I would be hesitant to approve this now, knowing that we want to make changes with it, changes to it. I think approving it and allowing quote unquote, you know, a few solar farms to sneak in and then change the ordinance is just going to cause trouble and heartache for us. I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, but I would like to see the onus be on the developer to prove the benefits of the project they're proposing. And I feel like relying on special use permits for everything puts the onus on residents and a butters, basically to try to stop something bad from happening in their neighborhood. And I, I, I have concerns with that. So I am, am not in favor of approving it as is. I think if we're gonna, you know, the projects that are going to be proposed are things that are going to be installed and in place for, you know, fifteen, twenty years, and a few extra months for us to, to really get this right and protect our town. Our well is time well spent and a worthwhile and smart investment. And I know it's, it's, you know, it's unfortunate that the process has gone this way. Nobody could have predicted COVID, and I think that kind of derailed stuff. Maybe we would have addressed these comments back in March, April, May, whatever month it was. But that's not where we are now. So I am, am not supportive of approving it as is. I think we should hit a pause button, take to heart a lot of the feedback we got from, from our residents. I think it's abundantly clear that Portsmouth residents have huge concerns regarding, you know, sprawling solar farms in, in, in and around residential neighborhoods. So I think we, we should proceed with caution.
Any, any other? Mrs. Jufusa?
Right. I, I want to echo the comments that councillor Abbott just made. I do think we should avoid having people apply under an ordinance that may not be restrictive enough. And I don't think that Mr. Hamilton's suggestion that we just ask people not to apply would be legally binding. And so I worry that we would be passing tonight an ordinance that needs to be made stricter. And I, I would also be in favor of not voting to approve it. It's really worthwhile to make sure that we carefully review this ordinance, and I think it's worth the few month wait. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, councillors. I would like to just offer a couple of comments. And, you know, I, I did review the ordinance, listened to the testimonial. Very familiar with, with our zoning ordinance. Very familiar with the, you know, the, the planning boards' process for, for how they review projects. I feel that this is a, a good ordinance. I, I don't think that there are any perfect ordinances, but I do believe it's a good ordinance. I believe that our process from the planning board and the zoning board, and how they review projects is thorough. The special use permit process is, is very detailed. Butters are notified. Most projects do require a special use, you know, permit, any even commercial projects in our town. The other aspect of this, where solar farms are, are permitted, currently permitted within commercial or industrial uses on those parcels, and they, and they, you know, most of them do about residential properties. The restrictions that are in here are, are more restrictive than other types of development that, that could occur on those properties for any other type of development. So I, I, I feel that the ordinance does have the restrictions. And is, is, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the ordinance, and I'm comfortable with our planning board and zoning board's abilities to administer the ordinance and still preserve the character and the integrity for the town of Portsmouth. These same ordinances have been in place for years. Our, our ordinances have been in place for years. And those ordinances and how they're enforced are what make Portsmouth, Portsmouth preserve the character, preserve the quality. Comes down to, you know, I know folks don't like change, and there are opportunities where there, there is going to be change. And so I know people do not want to go out and, and fight a petition or something like that. But as a property owner, you have a right to protect your property. And also, as a property owner, you have a right to develop your property. So I know it's not, you know, those aren't popular words, but I spent a, a lot of time on the zoning board. And I understand, you know, the discussions and the deliberations that go on. And I give them all a ton of credit, because every meeting that they have, you know, somebody's not going to like what you have to say. And, you know, I give them a ton of credit, and I respect all of them, and, and I think they do a great job in protecting Portsmouth. So I do support the ordinance. I know we're gonna, we're gonna vote, and I respect my councillors' opinions as well. You know, everybody should have the ability to speak, and that's part of the process. So with that, we have a motion and a second. So I think we're ready to vote.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
What's that?
Could I just offer a suggestion to, to make the motion retroactive to May 11, 2020? The date, the, the date, the previous hearing and the vote to approve the ordinance?
Okay.
Just out of sheer curiosity, Mr. Gavin, what is the effect of that suggestion?
Has there been two residential petitions that have been heard since May 11, when the council adopted the, the ordinance? And now we're having a rehearing of it because of the glitches in the notice. I thought out of an abundance of caution, we should make it retroactive to May 11, so there's no gap.
My motion to approve to be retroactive to May 11. Is my second, they're okay with that?
Yep.
Was it key?
Yes. Okay.
We have a motion and a second. On the solar system, zoning ordinance amendments, retroactive to May 11, 2020. All those in favor?
Mrs. Jufusa?
Nay.
Ms. Abbott?
Nay.
Mr. Benner?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Nay.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three. Okay. On to new business, discussion action. We have a Melville Park Committee grant application.
Is he there?
Okay, Mr. Ray?
Can you?
I'll tee it up for it. The Melville Park Committee are seeking authorization to apply for a trail restoration grant through the Federal Highway Administration Recreation Trail Program. The, the backup contains the proposed scope of work. These grants require a twenty percent match. They're applying for the twenty-five thousand, which five thousand would be required, required in a grant match. And that is, they have that money in their current budget. So I forwarded the recommendation, if you approve the request, and turn it over to.
Move to approve.
Negative.
All those in favor?
Wait, wait. Okay. We'll let that talk. See? Was he available? I didn't see him. I didn't say no. I see him there, he's in the orange box.
I'm you. Yes, I'm trying to. Hello? This is Dr. Edward Rizzi, Five Circle Drive, Middletown, Rhode Island, acting as the Chair of Melville Committee. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. You, you had a proposal before you. It was put together before we saw the dollar, dollar limit. And there's an awful lot in the original proposal, and I think it would stretch beyond it. So I took, I took another look at it. So what happens when you give me time, I read some things. And basically, what we have is the two major trails, the blue trail and the, and the orange trail. The problem with the blue trail, it's not a closed loop, okay? It comes up to about the waterfall, and you, you can't get there from here. The orange trail, there's an awful lot of dead wood. If we had a professional come in and chop up some of those trees, lay it on the trails, that would be fine. But when thinking about this, the, of the five, the five trails we have, none of them are handicap accessible. They go over ledges, they're in swampy areas and so on, with the possible exception of modification of the yellow trail. And what I'm thinking of is filling in a couple of the wet spots on the, on the yellow trail and putting a bridge across the, the stream which comes out of the waterfall. What that bridge would do would be, would allow a person, a handicapped person in a wheelchair, to park in the lower parking lot, down to the, the Bayside Road, go up that road, down along the Mot Farm Road to the Tower Trail, come down to the Trail Trail, cross this bridge over the falls to where our storage facility is right now, and, and loop back to the parking lot. If the person wanted an extensive experience in the woods, that would probably be the best way. Or they could take shortcuts. In any case, I went and I talked to an advocate for a person who's, for, for the handicap, and he seemed to think it was a great idea, because nothing like that exists in this area. But before I went any further, I wanted to talk to the council to see what you think about this idea. It's basically a modification of the blue trail, tying the blue trail and the yellow trail together with a bridge.
I think it's a great idea, Ed.
I think it could be done for the amount that, that's there. I, I see fortunately, we have somebody at the Design Review Board who's in construction. He might be able to help us plan that bridge. I'm a humble psychologist and system engineer. I don't do heavy construction. But in any case, it got some pretty pictures. That would be, I, this, this past weekend, we were over there, and I measured the, the span from, there are two large concrete blocks which had been put in. There was a bridge before, and when the Navy left, they, they cut the bridge out. But these huge concrete blocks have not moved in fifty years. And I measured the span from the, the one block to the other block, to the outside points, it's thirty-two feet, six inches. That would be the total span of the bridge. And of course, it would need, probably be about six, about four to six feet wide to carry a wheelchair and, and a walker, and also railings. And a couple of places, one place we need a ramp to get back up to the road. Not a very large ramp, but it's, it's, right now, it's a rocky slope.
Ed, I, I went to the workshop for this grant and gone to your meetings. I think it's a great proposal. Thank you guys so much for working on this. It's great.
So we pursue, proceed with this and write it up.
Right. Motion to approve the grant proposal.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're ready to vote. Let's do it. All those in favor?
Mrs. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Benner?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have a resolution in support of birthdate 2021 celebration for New Island birthday. We have.
Motion to approve.
Second. Andrew Kelly. All those in favor?
Mrs. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Benner?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Oh, hi, hi, everyone. I just wanted to let you know that I was here and to answer any questions if you had them, but it passed. So thank you so much. We are working with the Conservation Commission in Portsmouth, as well as Portsmouth High School. And now with your support, we look forward to reaching out to, to more folks in Portsmouth. So thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I think business number three is our proposed, this is the year 2021 dash 2022 budget timeline.
Yes, Mr. President, this is the proposed timeline for the budget. This, this timeline will give you a little bit more time to review the budget prior to your budget hearings, just two days shy of a month. Otherwise, it follows the same process that we've used in the previous four or five years. Okay? Do you want to? So I, I need you to approve the budget.
Move to approve the budget timeline.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Benner?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Oh, Mr. Fitzmaurice? Okay. Hold on one second.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask a question. In the past, the councils have established a policy regarding the maximum tax limit and have given that to the town administrator for guidance. Does the council intend to do that this year?
I, I'm not sure, Mr. Fitzmaurice. I mean, generally, the, the town administrator has a, has a guideline that he tries to follow. We haven't said any, as a council, we have not said anything specific. It's, I mean, if the council decided, you know, want to entertain it, we could. But I think Mr. Rayner's done a pretty good job the past few years pulling the budgets together. So at this point, we have not set a limit on, on, on the tax cap.
All right. Thank you for that. I would suggest the council do so. Obviously, this is going to be a difficult year. And, and the next one, 21, 22 year, isn't likely to be much better. So I would suggest that the council try and protect the taxpayers by setting a more reasonable residential tax increase rate than we had last time. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Fitzmaurice, comments well taken. I think Mr. Rayner's already. well on his way to trying to define what our, our, our goals are moving forward. He's very conscious of the situation we're in, especially with the pandemic. And, and we're, you know, we're, we're in it every day trying to manage the budget that we have. So I, I think Mr. Rayner has a solid handle on not only this year's budget, but looking at projections moving forward. There is hope. I mean, let's hope that the, you know, that the vaccine is gonna, is gonna, you know, see all that it's supposed to be. I know there's a few of them out there, but let's, let's hope we're turning the corner and better days are ahead. But in the meantime, I think we'll put a budget together very, very conservatively.
Okay. Let us move forward. Next, we have new business number four. It's our state legislative priorities, procedures and timetable.
Right. It's pretty self-explanatory. Basically, I took a page from the school committee's playbook and worked backwards from the January 25th date that we're going to meet with the school committee and our state legislators to give everyone a heads up about what the schedule is for coming up with our priorities to present to them. And this year, also presenting them to our legislators prior to their sitting down in front of us at that 25th meeting. So I hope, I just wanted everyone to be on the same page so that we can, you know, make this a more meaningful experience. So I would move that we approve this schedule and procedures.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chukuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iyer?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. To new business number five. It's new town council rules and procedures regarding council member behavior actions following town charter. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had brought this up back in June or July, sometime in that frame. Because there's a, there's a lack of any kind of ability for the council to police itself. If counselors in the past, counselors in the past, and if any counselors going forward in the future were to break any of the state constitution or the federal, national constitution, the reason it kind of popped back up in my head as we were taking our oaths last week, the oath does not include following the town charter, which is essentially the town's constitution and laws. So looking through, as I attached a few different things, there's a couple of different ways to go about this. I don't think we need to be as stringent as Newport is, where they're doing $1,000 fines and putting people in jail. I know there are concerns of overriding the vote of the voters. But I believe that if we have individuals or council members who are not biding by the, the constitution of Portsmouth being the town charter, that there should be some remedy for the council to be able to take action to prevent that behavior or stop the behavior. You know, one of the big things is it's the non-interference clause that was essentially put in to avoid myself or any other council members from going up to, say, Chief Peters and saying, hey, you need to appoint my kid as another, as the next police officer. Or even worse, hey, I want you to fire Officer Jones because he gave me a ticket last week. Now, if council members have gone, have gone out and asked for those types of behaviors or favors from administrative officials, they should be held accountable for that. And I'd like us to have our solicitor write up a section, and just looking at the town charter right now, underneath town council, I guess it would be section 212, would be the next logical section to put it into of procedural steps to take in order to police the council's behavior and individual council members' behaviors. I think it should fall somewhere in between, like I said, I don't think we have to send anybody to jail for asking for their, their kid to be the next police officer, but there should be some sort of remedy for the council to be able to police itself, which, which we don't currently have. So I would ask that we forward this request off to Mr. Gavin to write a section 212 using the different sections and backup material that I have to put forth a, a, a proof, a, a section for 212 to be brought to the council within the next six months and then sent to the voters in 2022. This is not something that has to be done tomorrow.
Mr. Chukuzo?
Mr. President, I just had a couple of questions for Mr. Hamilton. First of all, are you aware that we have section, Article 3, Section 305 of the town charter called the non-interference by the council section?
Yes.
And it is, to me, it seems substantially, in fact, identical to the sections that you attached as backup with, from Tiverton, Newport, and Cranston?
But there's no remedy there or actions that can be taken in order to stop the council person from doing those types of actions.
I believe we take an oath to uphold the laws of the town. Mr. Hamilton, I guess, did you feel that it wasn't something that the, that the charter review committee that just reviewed the charter should consider?
It should have considered it. It didn't. I probably brought it up too late. But as you look at Section 305, there's no remedy for the council. So if somebody were to break that, what do you do?
I believe you'd report them to the Board of Ethics, would you not, or to the Attorney General?
That's, they, they would, neither one of those would take up the case. It's not an ethics violation. And like I said, they're, strikingly, we didn't take an oath to uphold the town charter. Something that I haven't noticed in the past 12 years. It says, United States Constitution, the state constitution, but it doesn't say the town charter. So I think the, the council itself, the council as a body, should be able to police itself and hold accountable its own members. And the school committee should be able to do the same.
I guess I'm a little concerned that we'll be using taxpayer money to pay our staff and our town solicitor to make what I think is an unnecessary change to our charter that wasn't brought up to our charter review committee. So I won't be supporting this charter change, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Well, we, we have a, a request, we have a motion. We, do we have a, do we have a second? Second? We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Yeah. I, I'd like to know how much approximately this is gonna cost. So Mr. Gavin might be able to...
It falls under Mr. Gavin's normal retainer.
Does it? That's, I guess that's the question.
Mr. Gavin, online?
Yes, I would, I would be doing that work under the fixed fee part of the, the agreement.
And, and I'm not asking Mr. Gavin to drop everything and do it. I think this says something that could be brought back, like I said, in six months.
Within six months.
To be put forth and then utilized for the next election, which would be in 2022.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Kelly, you comfortable with the response? Okay. So we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? No questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Mr. Chukuzo?
Hold, hold on a second, Mr. President. Mr. Ryan got his hand up there really at the last second there.
Just, I, I just have one. Under the, what, I guess, this is enforcement that we're about to vote on. Who would have standing to bring up what we consider inappropriate behavior? Would counselors be kind of in the position of sort of accusing each other with, you know, who, under, under circumstances with this, with this change should take place?
I, I would think the first step would be, it would be brought to, you know, the town administrators awareness. You know, I, to, to pull the example, Dr. Ryan, you came in and said that you want Chief Ford fired. And you demanded that he be fired, and you're not gonna leave the administrator's office until he is. I think that's something that the town administrator should bring to the council. Not that you're gonna do that, but just
No.
a, as an example.
So it would be, it would be something where we, where it would be brought to the administrator's attention when a, when a town council member attempted to abuse his or her position on the council?
Correct. And then, and the administrator's responsibility would be to report that to the council. And then the council would have the ability to police that action. Now, does it necessarily, it, you know, is it a first offense to say, hey, Mr. Ryan, don't do that again. It's outside of Section 305. Please remember that you're underneath the charter. You know, and that could be the end of it. But if it's something that continuously happens, what's the next step? Again, I don't think we're gonna find you $1,000 like they do in Newport or throw you in jail, but we, we all need to be following the rules that are underneath the charter.
Okay. Further questions, comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Mr. Chukuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Nay.
And Mr. Iyer?
Aye. Motion passes five to two. Next, we have the assignment of town council liaisons to town committees. Not only did I swipe the playbook, I swiped the current list, just, just, just so that I'd have everything right in front of me. As we, as we move forward with the, with the new council, obviously, we have several committees that the council are liaisons to. And in some cases, we have one member, in some cases, we have two members. We could have, you know, a minimum of, you know, one member on a committee. But it's okay to have, you know, two members on a committee if, if we have enough capacity within the, within the council. So most of us are the same. We, we have Buttermeyer now and Mr. Katzman is no longer on the council. But we can go through each committee, and if you'd like to re-up, just let me know. If, if someone else is interested in being on a committee, they could voice their support for that as well. And we'll just, we'll just touch base with each of them. Should be very quick, I hope. Let's start with the Agricultural Committee. Mr. Chukuzo, you're currently the liaison?
I would like to step down from that position.
No. No. See how we do this? All right. All right. Okay. I wasn't prepared for step downs, but no.
But, Mr. President, I'll be happy to...
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd be happy to take that over if Mr. Chukuzo's no longer wants to liaise with the agriculture.
Yeah, I have four others. I just feel like I...
Now, now, I totally understand. Any, would it, any other seconds for Agricultural Committee? No? All right. Let's move on to the Equine Island Planning Commission. Currently, Mr. Chukuzo?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Bristol Ferry Town Commons? Mr. Kelly? It's fine. Good? Any, if anybody else wants to be a part, just speak up, otherwise I'm gonna keep going down the list.
Is that committee still even active?
Yes. Yeah. I saw them not that long ago holding court out there.
Yep, outside.
Citizens Interested? What?
That was...
The comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
That's gone?
Yeah.
That was Mr. Hamilton? Next, we have the Conservation Commission. Ms. Abbott?
Sure.
Dog Park Operating Committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Economic Development Committee is myself and Dr. Ryan.
I keep having conflicts with their meetings, so I think I'm gonna step down from that one.
All right. I, I have them as well, but I've gotta start to try to attend. Anybody else? Any supporters? Okay. Next, we have Glen Manor Housing Authority. We've got Mr. Chukuzo and Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Glen Park Working Committee? Ms. Abbott?
That's defunct now, isn't it? That's defunct. I think it's been absorbed into the Parks and Rec Committee.
That's part of Parks and Rec? Yep. So we didn't have Parks and Rec on this committee, on this list, because it was created after the fact, so...
Yep, I'd like to keep that one.
It's on the new list? I don't, I didn't print it out the new list.
On the new list.
It's on the screen.
Taking, it's my playbook!
Somebody rewrote it for you.
Pay attention, Mr. President. Jeez.
And changing the plays. The audible at the line here. All right. So, okay, Ms. Abbott's on Parks and Recs?
Yep.
Yeah. Parks and Recs, eh?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer, be on? Okay. Thank you. No, don't, follow my order. Follow my order! Harbor Commission?
Sure.
Hamilton? Anyone else? So then, I'm gonna have to try to read.
Melville Park?
Melville Park?
I'll take that. Oh, sorry.
Or, or we can both take that one.
No, Dr. Ryan will actually help clean the trails. So there you go.
All right. So it's myself and Dr. Ryan? Excellent.
Get your boots on, Mr. President.
Make sure you got plenty of mutton, Mr. Ryan.
Crossing that orange, we're gonna cross, we're gonna join the blue trail and the orange trail. Yellow trail.
Building bridges.
Bridge, we're building bridges. We're building bridges. Newport Chamber? What's that? All right. Newport County Chamber was, was formerly Mr. Katzman, so...
Are they doing their meetings virtual? Right now, they are.
Right now, they are.
When do they normally meet?
Those are usually daytime meetings, aren't they?
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay. Daytime meetings aren't good.
Okay.
I'll, I'll do it. I'll try and schedule myself around not being out of town for that.
So then we have Pension Investment Committee. That was Mr. Hamilton and myself.
I'd like to stay if we could.
Yeah, as well. Portsmouth Senior Center?
I'll take that. Again.
Top topics coming up this year.
We're up to three, Mr. Chukuzo, be careful. Don't go to four.
No, I'm at, I'm already, I'm gonna be at four. Trying to go down from five. I was trying to go to five, because I, I can attend these daytime meetings.
All right. So next, we have School Committee, which was, Mr. Kelly? Yeah, I'd like to stay.
Yep.
Thank you both.
Yes.
Solid Waste and Recycling? With Dr. Ryan? Glenn? But Dr. Ryan?
I am thrilled to talk trash for another two years.
All right. And then it was West Side Development, Tree Commission? Tree Commission was myself, but Andrew, Andrew's gonna take that over for me.
Oh, yes. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll sign onto that, too.
Dr. Ryan will be, oh, good. Excellent.
I understand they have trees down in Melville.
Yo, a lot of falling down, unfortunately. Don't, yeah, the ones around the dam.
All right. So now, West Side, West Side Development Advisory Committee was formerly Mr. Katzman.
I'll take that.
Okay. All right. That was, that was easy. Thank you all. Easy-ish. My playbook.
You didn't talk to the clerk.
I know. I was trying to, I was, yeah, I was trying to do something myself. Those are the members mistaken. All right.
Mr. President, can I ask a request of the clerk? Can you send that updated list out to all of us, please?
Yeah.
So I can remember what I just volunteered for.
Wait, wait, I'll tell you.
Tomorrow morning, you wake up, I did what?
I did, exactly. This water's going right to my head.
Okay, next, next item is our proclamation of sincere appreciation and thanks to our COVID-19 Emergency Response Volunteers. And if you will, I have the proclamation in front of me. But I would also like to pass on a few words from Mr. Perry. Just, he wanted to acknowledge a few things, and I'll read for Mr. Perry. It was at our peak, we had 48 volunteers helping in the incident management IMTs. And this does not include those that worked at the food bank or over 100 that have volunteered and trained to staff the med pods, which is ready for deployment. Also, over a dozen volunteers are directly involved with all hazard planning for our community. So there's, you know, there's a lot of folks that have been involved that we just wanna make sure, you know, we're not leaving anybody out. It's been a it's been a tough year, and we sincerely thank all those that have helped out. And I will now read the proclamation. Town of Portsmouth Rhode Island Proclamation. Whereas, in December 2019, deadly virus, which scientists knew very little about, was identified in Wuhan, China. In February of 2020, the World Health Organization officially named disease, officially named the disease, it caused coronavirus, coronavirus disease 2019, abbreviated as COVID-19. And on March 11, 2020, declared the disease a world pandemic. And whereas, on March 9, 2020, Rhode Island Governor Dean Ramondo declared a state of emergency, where upon the next few weeks, schools and businesses closed or operated remotely. Public gatherings were prohibited, parks and beaches were closed, social contact sections were put in place, including stay-at-home orders. And whereas, recognizing the threat beyond the health impact of the virus, and in that, the response actions would be life-threatening and have devastating impacts upon the financial stability many families, delivery of education, health services, and would degrade social services supporting our most vulnerable residents. On March 14, Town of Portsmouth established a COVID-19 Incident Management Team. And whereas, the global impact of the pandemic resulted in a severe shortage of trained responders within our communities. Thus, the reliance on volunteers was unprecedented. And whereas, with deaths numbering over 1,557,385 worldwide, 283,994 nationally, and 1,484 in Rhode Island. Thus of the date of this proclamation, deaths continuing to rise at a rate of 2,200 per day within the United States alone. And whereas, under COVID-19 conditions, particularly during the early months of the pandemic, when the risk of one's health was uncertain, but clearly higher for those choosing to volunteer, volunteering was a heroic act. And whereas, volunteers served in many roles, leadership positions that included supporting food distribution to hundreds of families at St. Hartman's Church, St. John's Masonic Lodge, or the Senior Center, a wellness team member creating and managing a system that provided over 275 local households needed services, personal protection equipment, team member that managed donations, protective mask production and equipment distribution to first responders and central workers. Throughout the community, trainees on a medical dispensing team were trained to dispense a COVID-19 inoculation once developed resident. And as a management team member, providing IT, planning, record keeping, situational picture and public information duties. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Portsmouth, not only for itself, but on behalf of the citizens of this community, express our sincere appreciation and thanks to the COVID-19 Emergency Response Volunteers. And recognition whereof, I, as President of Portsmouth Town Council, have hereby set by hand and cause the seal of Town of Portsmouth Rhode Island to be here and to exist since the 14th day, December 2020. Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Uji Fuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Budmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Ariah?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. On to correspondence.
To receive a place on file.
Mr. President, could I just ask one question? I know that one of the, one of them is the award of the Financial Reporting Achievement, that document, and I'm just wondering, Mr. Rayner, could you explain what that award is?
So the question is, what is this award? What's its significance? Every year, the town audit, the financial audit statement is submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association in the United States and Canada, where a board reviews our financial report and judges it in accordance with a number of metrics, and then determines that the town should receive what they call a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The Town of Portsmouth has received this report continuously since 2015. And what it lines, an impartial panel has determined it met the highest standards of financial reporting and financial excellence. And we have demonstrated a constructive, what they call a spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate our financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read our financial reports. It's not easy. This one, the standards are increased every year. And of course, the bar is set pretty high, as we have been awarded this now continuously for going on six years. So hats off to the Finance Department. They have been working diligently since June. Tremendous amount of work because it's gone into this last report. It's a repeat of what we did last year. Our report was just finished today, I believe, the draft. So we're on track. I hope to do it again, but this is a significant achievement for the town and for everybody in the Finance Department, Tax Assessor's Office that has contributed to making this happen for Portsmouth.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner, and thank you to Ms. Mills and Mr. Helflin and everyone who's involved.
We have a question for our hand up. Tom? Hello? We are muted.
Hello?
You're good. How you doing?
Okay. It keeps stuttering on me, I'm sorry. I was wondering if Mr. Rayner or Ms. Mills could tell us the cost of the dues for this organization every year and the application fee for this particular achievement award every year?
There is no application fee. I'm sorry, I stand corrected. It's $300.
Is it? Yeah, it's based on the population of the town.
I'm told that there is a formula based on our demographics, and we'll be happy to forward that to the council and to, we could post it on the website and we can send it to you, Mr. Perry.
The point, the point is that there is a, both a, an application fee and a dues fee. Is that correct?
There's an application fee. I'm not sure about the dues. I'd have to get back to you on that. The finance officer is telling me it's about a hundred dollars to be a member of the organization.
I think she'll find it significantly more than that, but that's fine.
Just for the record, Tom, read one tenth there, Greg.
That's correct. I'm sorry, I must have said that while I was muttering myself.
I recognize the voice, don't worry.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Mr. Perry? So then, so now we have.
But we didn't have a second, because you got.
A motion and a second. Second, to receive a place on file? All those in favor?
Ms. Uji Fuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Budmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Ariah?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. On to future meetings. We have our December 28. We haven't canceled that. We haven't brought it up yet. That was a hint. We have our January 11, January 25, and February 8. I would entertain a motion if anyone is so willing.
I would move to cancel the December 28 Town Council meeting.
I would second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Uji Fuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye, sorry.
Mr. Budmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Nay.
Because he's going away for the month of January or something.
Mr. Ariah?
Aye. Motion passes six to one. Thank you all.
Move to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor? Yes. All those in favor?
Ms. Uji Fuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Budmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Ariah?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Everyone has the holiday season. Stay safe. And wish you're seeing everyone January 11.
Boy, the snow on Thursday.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.